Professional learning plan that's going to be shared with you today is tightly connected to three MTSS essential practices or pillars being leadership development to provide that for principals, teachers, and central services staff to build capacity and infrastructure within our system so that we can do the work that we've set out to do. And then finally, to build ongoing and effective communication and collaboration channels between the professionals in the district, at the schools, and centrally.
Dr. McFarland has already referenced the importance of professional learning and knowing that there is the need for targeted, ongoing professional learning for our teachers. We really approached the design and delivery model of professional learning this year in a different manner, and we tried to leverage the use of our teacher workdays and a more possible opportunity of what we could do for our teachers to support building their capacity. You know, in the past, we've had early release days, and instead of having earlier release days throughout the school calendar, we made effort to strategically identify a professional or teacher workday at least one day a month, almost one day a month. And we decided a significant aspect of this different design model was to try to leverage those workdays to provide a more district-wide focus on some of the professional learning opportunities for our teachers. What we have found is given us a greater opportunity to really be consistent in our focus, both in content and delivery for our teachers district-wide. It's been able to give our principals opportunity to align professional learning to their respective school needs, some work that they're doing in their school improvement plan, as well as what they need to better strengthen implementation of content or service. And so, we've been very careful to use these days in a strategic way to identify on a larger district scale, what can we do for professional learning that supports our teachers district-wide. And one of the greatest benefits of this is we've increased accessibility. Often, when schools had one day to choose, it was like, who gets to this department first to invite them to our school? Now, we're taking it to them and bringing teachers to one location across our district to allow them to access professional learning on a district level. So, we're real excited about that aspect, as well as many other aspects as you will hear this afternoon. Structure in this professional learning in this manner has been different for us this year, but what we are seeing is giving us an opportunity for even greater ways to deliver professional learning in the years to come. And so, this afternoon, I am pleased to introduce Brian Pittman, Senior Director of High School Programming, Emily Mountford, Senior Director of Office of Professional Learning, who have been instrumental in working with our design committee throughout the year to bring relevant targeted professional learning to our teachers. They're going to walk you through our plan this afternoon to give you insight into the approach we took, as well as the components and structure of the plan, to give you insight a little bit about what teachers get to experience through this district-wide professional learning. At the end, if you've got questions, we've got time allotted for that for you to ask any questions that may come to you as you hear the information. So, thank you again for allowing us this time.
Thank you. So, our work is grounded in core belief three, well-supported, highly-affected, and dedicated principals, teachers, and staff are essential to the success for all students. We believe that if we do core belief well, and we're building the capacity of our teachers, that it will directly impact our core belief one, as well as our core belief two. Teacher's capacity is vital to the success of students, and research tells us that the single most influential factor to student success and to the success of a school are the teachers. And so, as a district, we respect, we honor, and we know the importance of giving teachers time to learn and grow with their colleagues and with the district staff. And so, that's what these PL days are going to do for us. The goals for the professional learning days for 2019-20, I have a couple of bullets here, and I'm going to speak to each one of them. The first one, respond to the voice of teachers in regards to professional learning. One of the data points that we looked at is when you look at the teacher working condition survey, our district is below the state average on the section of the survey that is related to professional development. And so, I just want to highlight a couple of those. Professional development is differentiated to meet the individual needs of teachers. Professional development deepens teachers' content knowledge. Teachers have sufficient training to utilize instructional technology. Teachers are encouraged to reflect on their own practice, and in this school, follow-up is provided for professional learning. So, these professional learning days are able to respond to those, and hopefully, we will see an increase in those. Another data point that we looked at was teacher feedback. And as a district, we're committed to core belief three, we're committed to the PL of our staff, and so, one of the things that we're hearing from them is they want content-driven professional learning. And so, most of the sessions that we are offering are content-specific, and this allows for teachers to engage in rigorous learning with their colleagues that are teaching the same grade as them, as well as the same content for them. The session topics and themes were driven by teacher feedback with alignment to our district priorities. Second bullet, provide access to high-quality professional learning to all teachers aligned to district priorities and a strategic plan. Allowing, and Dr. McFarland and Dr. Gardner hit on this, but allowing that equity and access was huge for us. And so, all teachers having access to the best district staff and teacher leaders that are doing professional learning. They're able to have access to professional learning outside of their building on these professional learning days. The next three bullets, I'm going to kind of hit together. Protect teachers' time in the classroom, provide choice of offerings for teachers and schools, and capitalize on these additional workdays that we're giving teachers. Early release days have been our avenue in the past to provide professional learning, and so, teachers would participate in professional learning usually at their school only for half a day. The only other option for us was to give them professional learning on an instructional day, having to pull them out of instructional time, as well as pay for a sub. With the new calendar structure, we do not have early release days, but we'd rather have workdays in each month, and teachers are able to utilize those days to participate in professional learning. They're not having to be pulled out of instructional time, and we're not having to pay for the cost of the sub. The professional learning structure allows for teachers and schools to have choice in the sessions that they will participate in. And so, this not only meets the needs of the teachers, but as well as the needs of the school. And so, they're able to align the sessions that they attend to their individual professional learning plan for their school. And lastly, enable teachers to enhance their professional learning networks. Teachers love to collaborate with other teachers, they love to learn from each other, and in a school, you have your PLT, and you have the teachers in your school. But these days are allowing teachers to go out, to collaborate, to learn with teachers outside of their school, from other schools that are teaching the same thing as them, as well as district staff.
I think it's key, that third bullet point is so important, and the fact that it is content-driven, because so many times, you know, you can apply to go to a workshop, and you pay money, and then you come back, and you're like, well, that was nice, but how do I use it in my classroom now that I'm back here? And so, having it be there, and then able to collaborate and build their network to see how other people are using it, that's really an incredible opportunity that we have.
To collaborate during the learning, as well as after the learning.
Correct, yes, both.
So, Emily has shared with you and introduced you to some of the overarching goals and contexts for the professional learning days, and I just want to provide you and extend that to share some structure that we're using to try to achieve some of those goals. So, these professional learning days consist of six dates over the course of the year, three in the fall and three in the spring. In choosing these dates, we worked to try to identify dates within the calendar where all schools had access to about four different days that they could access in order to participate in this professional learning. Our request to schools has been that they identify at least a day that teachers within their building could participate in this professional learning that's developed and provided by the district. To the degree possible, we have worked to try to ensure that every topic of professional learning that's available on one date is available on each and every date that teachers can be the students and attend this professional learning. Why has this been important in our planning process? First, it is to prioritize flexibility for our schools. We do need a core group of professional learning to provide to our district as a whole, but we also need to recognize that our schools have unique and different needs and provide them the flexibility to access that professional learning when it makes sense for their school-based plan. Second, we wanted to ensure that there was equity of access to all of the professional learning that we were offering on these dates. So, in this case, and with this structure, all schools can access the professional learning that's being offered, not just the first school to request central services support to present on an early release day, as it often has been in the past. Finally, I want to draw your attention to the link or the URL at the bottom of that slide. That link will take you to a Wake Connect page, which has been our one-stop-shop for all information related to the professional learning days throughout the school year so far. It will provide you with a number of details far beyond what we're going to share with you today, but it's nice mind candy if you get a chance to take a look at it. I want to dig a little bit deeper into the structure for these professional learning days. What you see on this chart is that for each date, it provides you the number of sites that professional learning is happening, the number of unique offerings, or the number of topics being offered on that date, and the number of sessions or sections of professional learning that are being offered. To put this into context, I want you to think about a recent conference that you may have attended, or even in Wake, our fall annual leadership session in August, where we have one site and several hundred people attending is often the way that these conferences go. These are days where we have six to eight different professional learning conferences happening simultaneously, and overall, serving several thousand participants on any of these given dates. Each session that's offered is either 90 minutes, three hours, or a full day, depending on what the need is of that professional learning. And some topics, in some cases, are offered multiple times over the course of a day, so that teachers aren't always put in the position of choosing, I can do this, or I can do that. They have the ability to create a menu that works for them.
I just want you to live in the logistics of that world.
Yeah, I know.
Because I want to commend the team that does this. This is like doing eight summer leadership conferences at a time. And so, when you look at managing the logistics around eight sites, 98 offerings, 208 sessions offered is the magnitude of it, and we're trying to...
Six different times.
Six different times, and we're trying to strategically locate it throughout in regions, throughout the district. So, you can only increase accessibility to the sessions they have to be able to participate in, but where they can participate in. So, this is a first...
Or is it where? Has it largely been our high schools because they're the size? Or where is the where?
We have leveraged the high schools, and we've also leveraged the McKinney Center.
Okay.
And middle schools.
And middle.
Especially on the year-round days, since we're a year-round high schools. If they're going out, then we're utilizing the middle schools.
And this is just for Wake County, or do we offer it for each other?
We presently just offer it to Wake County.
I would think that would be everybody to me.
Interesting thought, and surprising.
I would think that...
Ms. Cash, I know it's important to you, we are saving a lot of money on this.
Oh, I know you are. I don't know how we can make it. I mean, this is good learning for the whole world. I mean...
It's great, and there are lots of great people that are contributing to the success of those logistics. I do want to dive a little bit deeper into the structure of this, and not to belabor into details beyond what you need, but I just want to point out a couple of things. This screen is a screenshot of what a teacher would see for an individual course offering within Wake Learns. Wake Learns is our online platform where we manage professional learning, renewal credits, and all of that. Many of you may be familiar with e-schools, which Wake Learns replaced recently. And so, what I want to point out on this slide is the level of detail. Often, as a teacher, when I attended professional learning, I simply knew that I showed up in my school media center at 8:30 when my principal told me to, and at that point, I found out what I was going to learn. And so, here, what we've tried to provide for all teachers is not just a title or location, but a detailed description to give them an idea of what it is that they're going to receive once they get there, so we know that it matches the teachers' needs. But also, if I direct your attention down towards the bottom of the screen, we've been intentional in what we've provided to schools and teachers to tag each and every one of the offerings to a strategic plan objective, and also to a school improvement indicator. So, schools can also be very strategic and purposeful about what it is that they are doing as a school in order to meet their needs. This screen is just another screenshot to give you a sense of what teachers are seeing as they log into the Wake Learns. I'm going to draw your attention only to one detail, and in that second column where it has the section title, you're going to see, I know it's small, but you're going to see date, location, time, even though you see that probably in at least two other places on that same screen alone. The reason that I point this out to you is simply because, to give you an illustration of the value that's been part of the planning of this, we need to make the logistics of these days as easy and concise as we possibly can for teachers, so that they can truly be about focusing on their own professional learning and not trying to figure out the logistics of all of that. And so, that has been a value that we've tried to embed throughout the planning process. Of course, structure is only meaningful if it leads you towards purposeful movement towards a goal. And so, to that end, I want to provide you with some quick results and details now that we are halfway through the process of these professional learning days, and that halfway through is an important detail. At the moment, over 7,000 unique teachers within our district have attended at least one session. Again, remember that we still have three dates left in the spring, so we'll have others attend on those three dates, or some of the same ones attend again.
Now, this is certified staff, so that's 7,000 out of 10,000, so...
That's 70%.
70%, that's good.
So, of those 7,000 teachers who have attended, they have attended nearly 11,000 sessions. Now, what that means is the same teacher may be attending multiple different professional learnings on the same date at that location, or even better, they may be coming back for a second day because they truly got something meaningful out of the first day to attend more sessions.
That's over those three days.
Over those three days, yes, ma'am. All of our schools, to some degree or another, have participated in the professional learning days so far this school year, and 15 central services departments have led sessions. I really want to point out that last bullet too, because I think it's a critical point for no reason other than it is a great example of unified support, instead of silos producing great support, but that can be conflicting or misunderstood by schools. In this case, again, it is united support for schools. Also, it's important to note that in these sessions that we're offering, it's not only collaboration in that we have 15 different teams providing professional learning on the same date. We also have different teams within central services providing professional learning together in the same session. For example, one session focuses on K-12 science teachers together, and I just want you to sort of breathe that in for a moment. The power of K-12 science teachers in the room learning together, and then add in the collaboration with technology services to really dig into some digital resources that aid in that standards-based instruction, or the collaboration that's presently happening between our ESL team and the mathematics team to really try to focus in on how are we supporting our English language learners and finding success in the mathematics classroom. Overall here, again, the message is greater coherence and our support of schools.
And I would also like to add, with each of their central services departments sort of leading the sessions and planning, there have been opportunities where teachers then come in to teach other teachers. And so, it's providing an opportunity for those in our district that we know are exemplars in practice to then share that with not just folks in their PLT with a much broader district contingency. And so, that's really important to allow them that leadership opportunity to provide that.
Mr. Scott, it's slightly handed. Do you have a question now?
I did have a question. I was just wondering if you're tracking some of the more popular... I just happened to click on self-regulation strategies, and it looks like all the...it's completely full. Are you tracking, which I could totally understand why that's popular as the parent of two elementary kids, are you tracking those and trying to find, how are you tracking that to find ways if you can offer more of the popular...
Yes, ma'am, we absolutely are, and it's an excellent transition to our next slide, if I go forward. So, we have asked for feedback on the sessions. We've asked that from school leaders, principals. We've asked that from teachers via the Superintendent's Teacher Advisory Council, and feedback from Wake Learns evaluations of each session. But we are also looking at the enrollment numbers in sessions. In the fall days, we were in some cases able to see, oh, well, there are 45 people on a waitlist for this particular topic. Can we figure out a way to find another room and another facilitator and add more seats to do that? In some cases, we have looked at where we had two sections that in reality were one, and condensed those to honor the time of our central staff to be able to provide that session, but maybe we could use that other team to provide something else that had greater enrollment in it. And so, we are monitoring that, but we're also looking at it holistically, because as we look at the next steps, we're looking at what are the adjustments that we can make in the spring based on that feedback. And in some cases, those are sessions that we want to, teachers have requested, or we've seen long waitlists for what teachers have wanted. In getting that feedback, we have overall heard pretty positive feedback. Schools are expressing appreciation for content-specific learning options. They're expressing positives around time to engage in learning when they do not have to miss instructional time with their students in order to do it. And they are sharing the value and the ability to network and learn with colleagues that aren't within their building, often even not at the same level, elementary, middle, or high, where they work to share great ideas and build that network. They are sharing some things that we do need to work on. For example, Mr. Scott, as you indicated, there are some sessions that have run out of seats that have been very popular, and while we've tried to problem solve that, we also want to highlight the fact that at this point in the venture, we're pleased that that is the problem that we're problem solving. It's the right problem to have at this point, and we're trying to streamline and be responsive to that as we get into the spring. There's been a feedback from teachers that, what we know is that we have a large district, and I may live by heritage, I may teach in Eastern Wake, and I may have a math session somewhere out in Western Wake. And so, they have been able to explore the width and depth of the Wake County public school system. We are looking at going forward some possible avenues to try to minimize that commute and that travel time, so they can, again, really focus in on their own professional learning. Other next steps that we really want to focus in on are going ahead to work to set details for this for 2020, 2021 school year to allow schools a much longer runway to plan what their needs are and to express to us, I really want my whole staff or this whole PLT to be able to go to this option. When we have those conversations in the spring, it's a lot easier to build structures around being sure that we can accommodate those needs that we know. The other next step is to really explore broader than the professional learning days. How are we being very intentional and providing alignment between the professional learning that we do for teachers, with the professional learning that we do for principals, assistant principals, counselors, intervention coordinators, and the list goes on. And that is important because we want to be sure that as we provide support to schools, it really does feel like coherent support of what it is that they're being asked to do, and what it is that they feel like they've been called to do to support students in their classroom. It's been our pleasure to share all of that with you, and we certainly welcome feedback and questions.
Before we offer up questions, I do want to highlight this last slide as far as the feedback we're getting. What we are seeing to some points that you have already raised, from even extending it beyond, is that we're really seeing some great windows of opportunity as we build upon this for the years to come of how we expand this, not only for those teachers, as that last bullet, to our assistant principals on this day, as well as our principals not to take them out of the building, while students are there as well. And so, we just have a lot of opportunity ahead of us as we've just experienced this first part of the year with this work about how we might can expand this in years to come and really leverage these workdays at a very consistent, focused district level. So, we're really excited about it.
Ms. Fletcher, senior head.
How does this commitment alter calendar development, or inform calendar development? So, that obviously is a lot of... So that obviously is a lot of coordination to bring off the event. There needs, it seems like there's a lot of coordination to make the event possible.
So I, I think that you're correct. There absolutely, those things are intertwined, and we are having conversations with Wade and his team as they look at calendars to be sure that we try to meet as many needs as we can and looking at that. So that is something that we're trying to proactively look at as the years go forward.
Anecdotally, I've heard very positive feedback on the opportunity. You mentioned math, or science rather, music department. Our string teachers or band teachers have never been able to meet together K-12, as I understand it. And this gave them an opportunity to do that. So, and there's a lot of good things coming out of this.
If I could just add so that you just know for the short term, that the 2020, 2021 school year calendar, which has already been adopted, does include the, the one workday per month idea and has the number of workdays built into the calendar so that we can continue next year. It also does include that one district-wide workday where every single school of every single calendar type is out so that, and that's in October, which allows us an opportunity to do something district-wide no matter what calendar you're on. And, and it is facilitated, quite frankly, by, I think it was you, Mr. Fletcher, who said, there's an ebb and flow to how many days we have for instruction based on the calendar law. So the calendar law has a specified Monday closest to August 26th. You have the end on the Friday closest to June 10th, I think, or June 11th. And so there's an ebb and flow where in the tight years, which was about two years ago, about two years ago, we had the tightest year you can have, which was literally, there were 184 Monday through Fridays available to get 180 days of instruction, which meant the number of workdays we were able to put during the year. You may recall a couple of years where we put teacher workdays outside, vacation days outside the calendar in order to have more options for workdays inside the calendar. That was a very tight year. We are in a spell right now where we have looser years. We have more options for the number of instructional days available between the first day of the school year and the last day of the school year. That coupled with the change to eliminate the early release days and change the number of days in our instructional calendar has allowed us to do this. So we'll keep doing it for as long as we can, and eventually we may run into a year where it doesn't work as well and we'll have to figure something out. But it's a shift that I think has really been appreciated, one that we're just starting on, and, and I can see a lot of even better things coming from it, so.
A few questions. First, talk a little bit about the capacity of the staff. What are the implications for the professional learning staff? I know that over the years there have been cuts to that staff, but I heard you say that some of the training is provided by central office, is that different central office departments, some teacher leaders are providing some of the training? So obviously it's not all, your entire professional learning staff is not intact in terms of providing that, the training, but just talk a little bit about how the, who is doing the training, what facilitator and training, and the impact on professional learning department as you kind of roll this out.
So I can kick that off by just giving a, a couple of anecdotes. I know like in the academics department, for instance, our literacy folks can spend more time going out and coaching and working with schools now rather than just going out and providing PD 180 times a year, the same PD, to two and three teachers at a time. They can offer it seven times now to 50 or 60 teachers at a time, and then that gives them the opportunity on the days that we don't have the professional learning days, they can actually be in schools working, you know, face-to-face with teachers on instruction and not just, you know, providing, you know, small pieces of PD. It also provides an opportunity for us to target if we know that there is professional learning that maybe is something that maybe is required by the state or something that we know we need to be sure that every person engages in or within a subject. It provides us that opportunity to do that because we now have designated days, but it also allows for choice. So, so it doesn't mean there, as in before, if their one day was the one day they had and we were required to provide something, that's all they could get and they didn't have the choice. And so we're really excited about that opportunity. And moving forward, I think it's only going to get better as we can start to look at, you know, what, what requirements there might be and then choice. So it really provides a much more flexible opportunity for all of us.
Yeah. So my department is really doing a lot of logistics with Brian and then doing some of the PL, but most of the PL is done by either teacher leaders or district staffs. So from coordinating teachers all the way up to directors in every shop of instructional sites. So that could be student support services, that could be Office of Equity Affairs, academics. I mean, if you saw the numbers, I mean, there's a lot of people presenting, and so we're really tapping them. But they're doing the same thing each day. And so it's not like they're having to recreate something new each time. They're able to do the same thing each day so that teachers have access if they can't get in on one of the days, they have access on the other days.
How do you also manage the, I would, I would assume the administering of the continuing ed credits, that that's also probably a pretty taxing job on the back end? How is that sort of managed? Or is this a department that does licensing, continuing ed credits or that sort of thing?
Yeah. So Wake Learns is wonderful, and the rollout of that has been great. And so as we've transitioned, it's just been timely that this new plan sort of was at the same time. And so we're utilizing Wake Learns fully to sign up, register, and get credits for all of these sessions. And so one of the slides had a screenshot of what you see in Wake Learns. And so when they sign up, if they sign up for an 8:15 session and then they sign up for a 10:30 session, that's a different course in Wake Learns. And then after they attend, the presenter will mark them attended, and then they'll complete the evaluation, and then they'll get their CED credits.
I'll put automated here.
Oh yeah, so it's all tied together. And the sessions, some of them are content-specific, so depending on what type of credit you would need for like license renewal, the sessions are differentiated depending on what the topic is to meet those.
This is probably a little forward-thinking, but I'm just thinking about this as a school improvement strategy. Now, it's saying my assumption is teachers and schools can sort of opt-in or choose various professional opportunities. Have we thought of giving thought, particularly in terms of school improvement, where we might identify a school going, I guess almost opposite going into a school and providing sort of a whole school professional learning opportunity where there, where there is a need?
Certainly, that's, that's part of it. And I think what's really important is that if we can have a sort of menu of, of sessions and choices for next year, if we can have that by February or March of this year, then principals can now determine, okay, next year, I don't have to do any professional learning within my school because the district is providing enough professional learning that I can send my staff on seven different days to very targeted instruction or very target, you know, PLTs can be sent, or even potentially a whole staff can be sent to, you know, professional learning. And so it is providing schools with an opportunity to take the burden off of having to do so much planning for professional learning within a school. And we know what they're getting at the district level is certainly aligned to the school improvement indicators and to the district goals, and that's really important. So it really reduces the opportunity for 190 different PDs to something that's much tighter aligned.
Last, last question. What do you need from us as a board to continue and to develop and support of this, if any?
Well, I think one thing you've already surfaced is as we continue to look at calendars and approve calendars, that we have a commitment as a district of the value of these days with, built in within the calendar. I certainly think that, that is extremely important. And I, and I, we already know the support the board has for continued professional learning for our teachers and our staff, so we know that that's there. But as we, as we look at expanded opportunities, you know, we probably could start earmarking some of the money that we, funds we've used in the past for substitute funds to help even get some outside experts to come in beyond our own staff. Because teachers don't often have exposure to individuals outside our district that have expertise in certain fields. So this provides us an opportunity now to provide a greater opportunity for teachers to have access to national experts in a particular content area or service area or delivery area. So I think we could probably be very flexible in leveraging funds that we might not now be spending, and it's, it's a pretty high-dollar figure for subs that we spend for, on a yearly basis, now using it and repurposing some funds for even doing that for exposure.
Yeah, I can tell you in curriculum development alone, last year, well over $600,000 was spent for substitutes that does not have to be spent this year for substitutes. And that's the incredible savings for just one area.
Can I just raise that? Until now, I haven't heard much about budget implication, but at some point, I would assume that there's a price tag that's coming.
Mr. Fletcher, I think I spread your hand.
And to, to add to that, I think that's, that's a great point because, you know, some schools that have foundations and PTAs are able to pay for subs for their teachers to get exposure to some of those, and, and using this approach is absolutely, in my opinion, a more equitable approach for teachers around the district to have exposure and the opportunity to, to hear from specialists, even if their school, you know, can't, their, their school's community can't provide that for them.
Mr. Boomer? So, one other in terms of the expansion, I work some in human resources, and they're always looking for new ways to create some resources for professional development plans, the individual plan that each teacher would have. And there's occasions where somebody may need some extra help and improvement in an area as this becomes a library of resources that could go back to. Say if somebody came in and an expert came in about best draftings of IEPs district-wide, how to best serve students in compliance with, with special ed rules and so on and so.
As an example.
As an example. And that there needed to be some growth and improvement, either, you know, at a staff level or even on an individual level, that having that library to be able to tap into, to look at that and then come to, come back to the department chair about what you've learned from it and how you're going to implement it, those could be some, I think, some additional expanded uses.
Well, and that was one thing I was going to reference as well, is we began to expand this more, we see great potential to create a catalog of inventory of these professional learnings that teachers can access, especially new teachers coming to our district that may not have had the opportunity to participate in a professional learning activity that was involved. It's a great onboarding tool and opportunity that we have, and we would like to see that expanded as well. And we're limited in that capacity, when you speak of support, we're limited in that capacity right now, but that is an option to do a lot more videotaping and warehousing of our sessions that can create an online inventory almost that you can access for your own professional learning. And how important that is for new teachers entering our POTs at a school or just entering our district to get on board with some of our district priorities.
Wow. Well, I just, and this was a massive undertaking of logistics. I am so impressed with this. I, I, I have backgrounds in working on continued ed, but I, I've never seen anything quite like this, so it's done such a good job in a district at all. So thank you so much. It's got a lot of bright futures.
It is. It is exciting.
The team has just been incredible.
It's got to be.
The other thing I want to reference, you know, when we talk about our own teachers' development, we've often explored how do we continue to build teachers, teacher leaders and the pathway they have wanting to do something outside of the classroom at the time, and to give them the opportunity, exposure to design and facilitate professional learning for their colleagues. And you know, teachers respectively receive that from their own colleagues in such an incredible way. And so the opportunity to provide that pathway for our teachers to have that leadership role in providing professional learning in our district is also going to be key. And just as Ms. Haffey mentioned earlier about the collaboration that takes place for schools coming together, yes, she may be with your POT, but the opportunity to network with other teachers and other schools and to even be able to group them with similar demographics, similar needs, similar challenges, it's just got a lot of potential for even doing them on that end in regard to constantly facilitate those master teachers, as we like to say, teacher leaders.
Yeah, that's another.
Well, and given our size, you wonder why we hadn't been doing this sooner because we have that expertise and it seems some very efficient way to get that across the district. But I also recognize there's this push for local decision-making that a principal may still want to do their own professional development. Is that still an option for schools if they want to do a day-long?
There is still room for that.
There's room for that.
It provides flexibility, and that's why it's offered the same on multiple days. And so a principal can choose what day they are going to do their in-house. The point is, is for it to enhance and provide more than what they're just getting in their schools.
Choices.
Oh yeah, and choice. And, and we even have some principals doing at their school in the morning, and then their teachers are having choice in the afternoon or vice versa. So they're being very, you know, creative in how they're utilizing it, which is great.
Because they're used to the half-day.
Yeah, absolutely.
Trying to structure sessions that way too. When you talk about having the number of 7,000 access if they're 10,000 sessions, so they may go to the morning for one session, then turn and go to the afternoon for another session, or balance with school versus district, or it may be all day.
Or they may send some staff out to sessions and be able to do small groups with some things with their staff and then do on other days. So it's just, it just depends on what their needs are and what's working best for their school.
It was very impressive when Ms. Cash and I went through the EO curriculum because we need to be very proactive as this, as our new English language curriculum comes out and continues to roll out. We've heard feedback that we need the mathematics curriculum to be more uniformly implemented across the district. So I would hope that that's certainly going to be, and I saw that in the offerings from September, so I applaud us using that to truly make sure that we're strengthening both those, those opportunities for professional development for our district.
Yeah, seeing all that on paper when we went that day was really impressive.
Well, thank you very much. Two more quick questions.
Obviously, we can do this, as someone mentioned, I keep hearing the enterprise question over here. We can do this because of our size and our capacity as a district, so I'm sure that there are not many districts who could even take on such a massive undertaking. But are there other districts, both in-state or out-of-state, that you all are aware of that even have something like this opposed to this?
No, in fact, some of the work, some of the sessions I attend around the state with other academic officers, this is one of the things that we have shared or that I've shared with them is, is a way to impact their district. Even if they just do a day for a day in the fall and a day in the spring, it is a way to impact fully a district without sort of piecemealing, and it saves money. I mean, to Scott's point earlier, schools don't have to now use their funds to bring in people and pay. We can do that, and it's, you know, and it's cost-effective. And so, yeah, you know, we're certainly happy to share the process.
Let's not forget, it saves teachers from having to write sub-plans.
Right, yeah.
We've been brainstorming this for a couple of years. It was like, hmm, no.
Well, we had to do the calendar two years in advance, right? We had to do that.
That's an app.
So, obviously, if you think about it over the years, and some barriers have sort of kept you from doing it or whatever, so what are the challenges? Now that, now that you've rolled it out in this first year, what are some of the challenges that you see going forward now and sort of in the future as this sort of expands? I'm sure there have been some keeps in the road and that sort of thing. So what are some of the challenges or barriers that you've sort of incurred and, and going forward?
Well, I can say from a follow-up standpoint, we know that professional learning is only step one, and then there is implementation when you move back into the classroom. And professional learning has to spiral, and so we have to understand that what we offer, you know, that may be new for teachers this year, now next year we have to offer similar again, but now they're going to come with a different set of questions or a different perspective because now they've been working. It also then puts the burden on us, you know, centrally, how do we now go out and ensure practices reflect in classroom what we are teaching in professional learning? And so that's really sort of the next iteration for us is to build processes and procedures to support that sort of work.
That is a recap. We may come, we have three more days, right? There's three more days left in, for the year.
And logistically, I would just say, we don't really have the capacity to do anything right now with all 10,000 teachers on one day. And that's something that's kind of lurking out there, you know, what would that look And that's something that's kind of lurking out there, you know, what would that look like? What would it be? And what would it take to do something like that? Where would we go? So, just, you know, that's something, that's another layer at some point somewhere else, right? So, this opportunity to be dropping in and out and have things repeated is also a mechanism that allows us to spread that out because we can't do everybody at once on one thing.
Well, this has been a very good update, and we do have other things on the agenda. Just, you know, to highlight some of the discussion, and I was really glad to hear you hear you say, Dr. McFarland, the recognition of what happens next year in the professional development I run. I have some people coming back for a second year because I got to see it again before it sort of sinks in. But they bring a different set of eyes and experiences when you hear it round two. How do you incorporate that round one and round two? That's really key, and I'm glad you're thinking about that from a sustainability perspective. You know, the other thing from a sustainability perspective is for us to be thinking about right now is when do we bring new things in and when do we retire? Year one is kind of, we sometimes will think it's early to think about what's the sunset, but just, you know, I think Lindsey talked, Lindsey or Heather talked about, you know, how do we keep track of what we're doing? So, building that plan, I think, is really great up front. And then the last point I note is, yeah, there's another chance for choice with purpose. And we talk about that with assignment, but it's good to have a choice, but like Mr. Sutton noted, sometimes with school improvement plans or whatnot, we need to target and we need to understand the difference between popular and needed. There can be some PD that's really, really popular and everybody wants to go to. That may be good, but we may have others and it's not as popular but as needed. So, you know, finding that popular versus needed balance, choice with purpose, I think is absolutely critical. And I think what I hear is the main thing you need from us is a commitment to the work, but really a commitment to the calendar. As long as we've got the calendar structured, then this can happen. But that's, as I'm looking at it, that's probably our biggest vulnerability right now. And as we think about expanding to, you know, we've got our 10,000 teachers, but we've got a lot of teaching assistants. It'd be great to see, and when I interact with the teaching assistants, this is one of the things that I hear from them as well, is where do we get professional development? So, I don't know where that can fit into this picture as well. It's just like, yeah, here's something more to do. I get that, but just as we, and as we roll this out, just sort of keeping the big picture.
They're not even there on non-instructional days.
Yeah, I know. That's the other thing.
Well, they're not there, they're not.
They're not compensated to be in the school on non-instructional days.
They might be there.
We have, didn't we have for the first time, a couple non-instructional days where they can be there for the first time in a long time? Am I right?
TAs.
Yeah. Three days. But so, these are all things that we need to think about going forward as we put budget pieces together, right? How do we advocate for this for our non-instructional staff as well? So, really good work, highly to be commended. Keep it up.
I apologize because not until the very last bit of the Q and A, that's something triggered a question. We focused on the teachers that are taking advantage of this, and your materials say to about 7,000 teachers that have attended at least one session, but we also said we've got about 10,000 teachers. So, the 3,000 who are not attending any of these sessions, is it a matter of convenience with scheduling? Is it a matter of interest in topics? Are they getting alternative educational opportunities elsewhere? Or have you looked into?
So, we've provided teachers with, not teachers, principals with data around who from their building has attended and what they've attended and some overviews of that. And, you know, our principals, particularly of the high school variety, are often competitive, which is a quality that we love about them. And so, they want to know things like where does my data fall? And is it this or that? You know, one of our encouragements has been, you know what, if you're one, right now, the real question is, you know, are all of your teachers engaging in meaningful professional learning? That may be on one of these days, that may be something very specific and targeted that they're doing in the school building. And then to Dr. McFarland's point earlier, the other question is, how are you taking advantage of that capacity that's being built with professional learning to benefit students in the classroom and those experiences? I think if they begin to focus on those questions, then I think long-term, that will drive us to progress monitoring that makes sense to not just sort of count the digits, but to really be getting to our strategic goal.
And also know that it was an intentional decision for some schools, not just access in the fall, but access in the spring because of what they had already designed on some of their warm exits in schools. We anticipate that some of the teachers who have not gone and been in the spring because that was a decision they were planning in school, there's more scheduling issues.
So, we will be, can we get another report then at the end of the?
The end of that, can I have a here?
I mean, I can kind of look here in this. Yeah, another report on this at the end of the sessions.
Yeah, update.
Maybe a preview for next year.
Yeah.
All right, and that's why we scheduled the full-time for work session. It went longer, but that was, but that's important work. So, welcome Glenn and Wade to the table for draft two of the enrollment plan.
I'll give Mr. Croz in just a moment to pull that up.
Chair Martin, we're handling more and more of them. Since the last time we were here, draft one on October 1st, staff has reviewed hundreds of questions and suggestions from the community. We've held three public sessions that many of you attended, and that really enabled us to further engage with parents on a different level than we have in years past, to be able to provide additional follow-up information to them as well as answer questions. And we've had the opportunity, based on some of those questions from parents, to schedule and meet with some additional town planners to get follow-up information from the annual data that we get from them just in December. So, we've been able to take all of this information, thoroughly review it, and Mr. Croz and I are excited to share with you the review of our recommendations for draft two of the 2021 enrollment plan. Can I go over to the floor?
Before we get started, I just want to say to all of the different departments that came to those different sessions, I mean, that was huge. There were at least over 25, 30 people from Wake County staff there to answer questions on three evenings. So, I mean, that's.
And feedback that your family's also have been involved in that process in years past, they were very appreciative of the, in many cons, the one-on-one individualized attention because they may have, they may have been hesitant to put a very, to not put certain information out on the public forum. And that's a great venue to be able to share information for all, but sometimes you just have that very family-specific question that you want to get answered. And I think that those opportunities were had, and I think families were very appreciative of that.
Glenn did always have a crowd around him, though I noticed. There was always a crowd around the student.
It's good to be the popular guy.
Yeah.
He's got the tipper.
Go talk to that guy in the suit.
Thank you. I appreciate you having us today. So, we are here to present draft two. Here are the outlined changes to draft one. So, for draft two, we generally just propose the changes from draft one. The original draft one becomes the advanced, okay? And so, what I've provided to you here is just slides one through 18, which is the draft two slides. Everything else, in its entirety, can be found online, okay? So, here are the items that we'll be discussing today. Brassfield, Highcroft, Fuquay High, Fuquay Middle, and then we have some other proposed changes. These would be areas where the attendance line was brought into question about, you know, do we pull it over a street? Do we look at this and that? Some very minor changes, we'll go through those, okay? So, for Brassfield Elementary, in draft one, we had proposed an area of Brassfield Elementary would be assigned to Wakefield Elementary. Staff had looked at this particular area. We were not able to assign the entire neighborhood to Wakefield Elementary out of Brassfield. Parents did provide us feedback on that, that we were splitting their neighborhood. Staff felt like we had a natural boundary. So, in looking at that further, staff feels that we would like to bring a revised proposal for 2021 back addressing this particular item. So, we are removing it from draft one.
And I would ask that we communicate that really clearly to that neighborhood. So, we heard them, that they were concerned about splitting the neighborhood and that does mean, but that still means we need to do something in the coming year to relieve the crowding.
Yeah, I mean, we've already talked about that as a neighborhood and had a couple meetings on that because it does need the whole neighborhood to be going into the Wakefield area, but we just need to have another plan for Wakefield at the time. So, I think they're, I think they understand this is a delay or a bigger move.
And then those outlined at the top was from the Wakefield area, those greens neighborhood.
We could certainly look at that as well.
Because those, those are involved in the high school move, and I just, we could not court.
So, in the meantime, in terms of revised proposal, was there any feedback coming from the community that might inform the revised proposal for 21?
Would, say that again? Would?
Any input, suggestions coming from the staff for next year?
We can certainly use the feedback that they've given us already. A lot of the feedback already generated though centered around looking at other areas to assign other than their particular neighborhood. But we can certainly reach out and get some more feedback from them regarding that.
I think it's legitimate to recognize that nobody likes a reassignment. We understand that. But what I heard is, like Ms. Cash noted, keeping the neighborhood together is a high priority. I think that's something that we need to take into consideration. And the other thing that I hear routinely for this and others is the earlier we can communicate, the better so that people have plans. And I know we've moved it up from where we were several years ago, but the sooner we can communicate to families, the more useful it is.
I would just, since there is no definition for what a neighborhood is.
Correct.
That can be a challenging commitment. If there are 1,000 homes in the neighborhood, that's not going to work.
Right. And there are instances in the past where we've had communities where neighborhoods have been split.
Right.
So, because I can't associate.
Yeah, just to clarify, my statement about keeping the neighborhood together is that's something we need to look at and be cognizant of, but I completely agree with you, Mr. Fletcher, what defines a neighborhood.
I'm pretty aware of this neighborhood and the boundaries really well, so they know it's just, it's just.
This one is tighter as a neighborhood.
We're going to configure it together and move them.
Right. All right, so during our draft one discussion, several members have asked for the history of the calendar and capping at Highcroft Drive Elementary and Mills Park Middle School. So, Highcroft Drive Elementary opened in 2004. It has been capped for this current school year. And their calendar over the, since its opening from 2004 to 2007, they were on the traditional calendar. Starting in the 2007 school year to 2011, they were on multi-track year-round. And in 2011 to 2016, they were on track for only. And then 2016 to present, they were on the traditional calendar.
Wow.
Mills Park Middle School opened in 2010. They were capped in 2014, and they are capped currently. And their calendar has always been on the traditional calendar since the school.
So, there are a lot of families impacted by this that, you know, they have children who are not much older than their current elementary children. They've done a calendar switch, so that's a feeling that they're having of being moved from a school.
To a year-round.
To a year-round, yeah.
Although I think it's fair to recognize, from 2007 to 2016 is almost a decade on year-round. Granted, it wasn't always multi-track year-round, but again, this was a time when we had, you know, we had to look at our multi-track year-rounds, and if they're not in full use, they actually cost us more than going single-track. So, a decade is a long time.
I'm not sure that was the case at Highcroft, however.
No.
Highcroft has been oversubscribed since the day it opened, no matter its calendar.
It's got a tight assignment there as well.
It is. It's very, very dense.
So, looking at Highcroft, okay? So, staff was asked to reduce the crowding at Highcroft. In draft one, this particular area here was proposed to be assigned to Salem, which is in the darker purple here. Revised for draft two, we are proposing that they go to Turner Creek Elementary. Being that this area is a smaller number of students than this particular area, Turner Creek does have the capacity to take on the additional students at this time, even though they have some future growth coming within their base. Part of the conversations that we did have with municipal leaders, we also did identify a new development that was going to be planned for this particular area. And so, before that development starts, we are going to be assigning it to Carpenter Elementary. And then you'll see also for the middle school that'll coincide with Austin Ridge Middle School.
Oh, good. Okay. And right now, that is, there is no children in the.
There is no children.
There are no children.
Right.
Okay. We had also talked about, because this was on the table last year, and there was an issue with feeder pattern, but the calendar stayed the same, revisiting, and I know we've had many conversations and that just wasn't a possibility, but I appreciate staff taking the time to look in that and run those numbers because I know this was something that a lot of this community was asking for of, is it feasible to do this? And so, kind of great having a more proximate school, although not ideal, you know, everybody would like, love to stay at the school they're at, I think, is.
Considering the explosive growth since, in the last year, especially in the Horton's Creek area and Austin Ridge, you know, Green Hope is no longer really an option that we want to exercise at this time because we're going to need some, it's more proximate to Horton's Creek and Austin Ridge where we may need to look at to how to lead the crowding there.
And if I remember correctly, having, I mean, it's fairly close.
To Turner Creek?
It's pretty darn close to Turner Creek, that area.
You come out of there and develop, make a right, and it's right down.
Yeah.
Horton's Creek is capped.
That is correct.
Yes.
So, here are the data tables. Specifically, we can look at the changes for Turner Creek. They go from 83% with trailers to 92% with trailers in 2021. And then that jumps from a proposed of 90% in 2022 to 103%. Okay? And that again, takes into account the new growth that they're going to have in their base as well.
But 103% on multi-track year-round, I mean, really, 105% is.
It's much more feasible.
It's much more feasible. For the White Oak move, we had heard from folks coming out of White Oak. I know we looked at schools that were in proximity, they, you know, wanted to stay on their calendar, but just the size or?
Well, with White Oak, we have the K3 class size legislation concerns. The school is three floors. They only have 13 floors, 13 classrooms available on the bottom floor, which would limit their K classes to six. Because if you have 18 in a class for kindergarten and then you roll to 16 in a class for first grade, that means you're going to need an extra classroom to expand. So, that would be the 13 classrooms. So, that's a max of 108 students with no plus-three as we get into this legislation. So, really limiting to 108 students in kindergarten.
Is that still allowed for pre-K or special ed over nine floors?
That is not counting the pre-K and special ed classrooms that are on that floor as well.
Okay, all right. So, that's excluded from that calculation. Okay.
And so, the, some of the parents have been asking, you know, is there room for trailers? And do trailers help with alleviate the K1 crowding on the first floor? Or are those not eligible for general classroom use? Because I know generally, it's not until about second grade or. Because I know generally it's not until about second grade or specialists that we see trailers. So.
So they do have capability for four trailers. But again, with the K1 being the egress concerns, adding the additional trailers, does it make a significant change to the school's capacity?
Okay. And then, I mean, it's also a bit of a cost to get a trailer, let alone four trailers onto a campus. Yeah.
Which both cost and time.
Yeah. And that was frustrating for parents had not heard of the K3 class size being such a firm cap next year. Because they said, oh, well, we've had that and we've had larger classes. And we have to underscore that this next year it is set because there's no leeway, there's no mercy on these numbers. And it's so frustrating because White Oak was a school that, you know, we really, you know, we didn't allow many transfers because we knew that the growth was coming. And so all the projections we had was we had more time with this school and then K3 class size came. And that really skewed everything. Now, you know, the school opened three years ago.
Right.
We opened it with like 340 kids assigned to it.
Right. And to look at it, I mean, and to, even with these changes, see that we're going to be, you know, at 104 and 125% capacity, you know, it's, I mean, that was going to be the school that would just grow.
Yeah, unfortunately, capping may be inevitable in this case.
Well, I mean, and that's hard, too. I don't really want to cap a school.
It was surprising to know how many parents have not heard of K3 legislation.
Just remember, we don't clue in until it's made.
Right.
I mean, that's just new, that's human.
I know, I know what it is. And that's what was, it was surprising and disappointing, but, you know, yeah, normal.
And then Glenn, there were concerns about Salem Middle becoming overcrowded. And then for the White Oak move, going to Salem and Salem Middle has student assignment identified traditional calendar application schools for those. I know finding a school on the traditional calendar that has seats like East Cary, I know it's far, but what is your staff thinking?
So the traditional calendar application school for White Oak families would be Ballcom.
Okay.
And then for middle school, it would be Apex Middle.
Okay. And the folks from the, coming out of Highcroft, in the southern portion that's going to Turner Creek, what are their application?
I believe we're keeping it still at Green Hope where we had the original law authority.
Okay.
And then for middle school, again, would be Apex Middle.
And I heard, also heard from families, because we're, the White Oak area, their classification beyond, behind the census, looking at their census tract, it looks very different 10 years ago than it does today. And so there was concern that they, you know, if they applied to Magnet, they'd be a lower priority. It's their information, you know, should they apply to Magnet? Can they apply to Magnet? Feasibility, they had some concerns about the application process.
So the census block data, that is not 10 years old. That's, it's updated data that updates every year. It takes the last five years, an average of the last five years.
Okay.
So each year it will update. I believe the current years are 2013 to 17 or 14 to 18. I have to double check those again, but it does take the last five years.
That's much better reflex than that area than 2011.
Correct.
Glenn, at one of the, a couple of the open houses, some of the White Oak families brought numbers of all the transfer students that were there. Can you refresh our memory? I'm pretty sure that the transfers that would be there are at the higher grades because when we opened the school, my recollection is we were, we allowed transfers in, but I don't think we've let transfers into White Oak for the last couple of years, particularly the K3.
I would think most of the transfers there would be children or staff.
That is correct.
They had a number of 100-ish or something on that order.
But that might have included overflow? Because there's still an overflow for a capped school.
Yeah, there are approximately 25 overflow students from Mills Park, which is down significantly from the last couple of years because we are finally seeing the effects of the moves to reduce the base of Mills Park Elementary.
But again, those are primarily, are they not in the upper grades?
Let me just double check real quick.
Well, will the overflow be recalled?
Oh, we can look at assigning it to another school, yes.
No, recalling back to Mills Park, not changing the overflow.
Go back to Mills, go back to the base.
That's our hope, yes.
Undo the over.
That is our hope. We're starting to see the effects that seats are becoming open. Again, with K3, though, that.
That's hard to explain to people.
How quickly we can do it, but we are hopeful.
I just, I mean, I hate to change the overflow for people who.
Who've already overflowed.
Who are currently overflowed.
Well, if we're uncapping.
Back to High. That's hard to explain to people that are bitter, you know.
No, I wouldn't want to change the overflow story.
Right.
Particularly if it's only a year. But to uncap and to ask, invite those folks to come back to their base school would alleviate an issue at White Oak.
Ms. Cash?
I just want to ask you about Carpenter. The numbers don't change from the first one to the second one. Is that because we don't know where we'll move into the new development? Is it just uncertain?
It's not going to happen in the next two, two to three years, yeah. We're not anticipating.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any more questions on this one?
Okay, so again, this coincides with the middle school moves. The only highlight that I wanted to bring to your attention was that particular area that we were assigning to Carpenter. This would now be included to Austin Ridge Middle School. The area that we moved to Turner Creek from Highcroft would remain at Salem Middle School, giving them K alignment. And then this would be the data tables. Again, you can see there's no change for Austin Ridge Middle School because the student is not projected to be in the school.
So Salem Middle, I mean, with us adding to their base so much, but them only being projected to be at 88% by 2002, 2003, or 22, 2023, that still seems low for a year-round middle school. So is it just, but we also know there's going to be growth coming in that area. I mean, I was just up there the other day and it's across from, from the folks that have been talking to us out of White Oak, there's just land that's been stripped down to dirt. So I anticipate there coming, but since they're not here yet, we can't.
As we get our projections this year, we'll be able to update that.
Okay.
So growth is coming to the Salem area?
Yeah, we do have residential road.
That area all along 64, what, Woodridge is it called? I can't remember the name of it. Do they have apartments there now and then the townhouses?
Yeah, I don't recall the name. It's right off of 64 and goes to Jenks Road, I believe.
Yes, and there's that gas station on the corner, yeah.
Yeah, I, there's very few places in Western Wake where we don't have new residential road.
I just need.
Very few places in Southern Wake and Southeastern Wake and Garner where we don't have residential road. And Wendell and Semulon and Roseville.
Look at just find acreage for another elementary school. That would be great.
Okay, so our next.
And it's pandemic.
You can't drive 10 miles without having major growth somewhere in Wood County.
It's pandemic.
So the next slide here, I'm just bringing back a slide that we had discussed during draft one, and I wanted to highlight the proposed moves. So after we had proposed the moves to open Willow Spring High School, this area here was of concern to board members, the 69% projected growth or projected capacity of Fuquay in 2023. So one of the things that came from that discussion was you asked us to look at other ways to expand the base of Fuquay High School in order to balance this particular school with the other schools in the area as we look ahead to 2023. And so our recommendation is as such. We did not remove any proposed base attendance area suggestions from draft one. We just added, and the particular area we added was this area here and then this little area up in here.
And that's dirt.
That is all dirt. There are no students in any of these areas. We may have had one recently move in this week that we have contacted or we will contact by the end of tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay? This is an explosive area. We do have lots of, lots of growth. Parents had also brought up some areas that were closer to Holly Springs High School for us to look at. One of those properties, like Garrison from last year, is going to butt up to the property.
Yeah, they, I mean, you can, we walked it.
Yeah. And so they, we anticipate they will have that same path that Garrison has that will connect that neighborhood to the school.
So the Honeycutt, so is that the Honeycutt Farms community that's coming to north side of it? So, because they are within the mileage of the no-transport zone.
Yeah. If sidewalks are put in, they will, they would be within a no-transport zone.
The hard thing is there's so many of these communities are like just outside of that that are being impacted. And it's, I mean, it's really hard. You have some that can hear, you know, they can see the lights and hear the game from their subdivision. It's not.
And that's the difficulty when we have explosive growth and trying to provide proximate schools when you just don't have the ability to purchase land in this particular area. Sharon Harris and the county line are two major reasons why we cannot put schools closer to where this growth is.
And then the, there was concerns from one of the communities that their access to 55, Ralph Stevens, was going to change. Assuming transportation nearby, have you contacted transportation?
About.
About.
Wildwood?
Yes.
Transportation coming in and out of there?
Yes, that there was going to be a change to the intersection at the corner of Ralph Stevens and 55.
I'll check back with transportation, but there are two ways to get out of that development, well, to access Fuquay High School from there. You can go to the right, leaving the development and head down 55, or you could go to the left of Ralph Stevens and then head down Pine Grove Boulevard.
Okay.
So there are two, two ways for transportation to get in and out to the schools, even though there is only one entrance and exit to the development.
Right. Because there, there's going to be a lot of commercial traffic in that, and it's going to be a very large and popular grocery store that recently opened in Raleigh. And don't know what it could be, and a home improvement store. So, you know, they don't keep the 10 to 10 o'clock hours, they're open early morning. So that, that was the concern with trailers and students driving.
Yeah. It's pretty limiting because there's only, like I said, one way in and out of the development.
Right.
And I think they share the same road with the Lowe's Home Improvement and the Wegmans, I believe that's going to be.
And the other concern coming from the other side of Castle was again, the proximity, you know, you can be at the school within three minutes driving versus nine minutes driving to Bangor Boulevard.
Which is not uncommon, like we're seeing in Western Wake, the Mills Park area, and we just happened to see that same explosive growth in the Holly Grove area. So unfortunately, we're not always able to provide the most proximate school to families.
So the biggest question was, having looked at the new, the infrastructure that new development brings and looking at the dirt that has been added, you know, does the growth from the new dirt offset some of the people or are they all needed in order? You know, has that been looked at?
So what we have here is, you can see in the after slide, it went from 69% to 72%. So that actually tries to balance some of the schools in the area. You see Holly, Fuquay at 72%, Holly Springs at 86%. Those would be the two that were impacted. Holly Springs went from 90 to 86%. So it does slow some of the growth there within their particular base.
And again, the reason we weren't able to go north to pull kids out of Holly Springs is because Friendship is quite packed.
Yeah, so we couldn't, we couldn't assign students to Apex Friendship on the other, on the northern or western border of Holly Springs because Apex Friendship does have severe crowding concerns. They are a school we are looking at for capping. We do have H12 coming in the future.
In the northeast, Holly Springs, southeast, we have.
Correct. And that school.
2024?
I believe it's 2024, yes. And so that school is solely going to need to be needed for relieving the crowding at Apex Friendship. One of the other things that's worth noting in these 2023 numbers for the, for the four high schools, these numbers represent no students exercising their right to grandfather. So we know that, that these numbers actually probably will, Fuquay will be a little, will be higher than 72% based on the number of families that are eligible to stay at Fuquay. So this, this is almost like a worst-case scenario if every single student moved with the assignment.
Ms. Cash?
But so the numbers are the 72, 86, 76, 81, okay. We've got high growth around all of that. They're all going to go considerably higher.
Especially the Fuquay and Holly Springs area. Willow Springs will be a little bit longer to have, to see their growth take off, but the town of Fuquay did annex additional land, so we're anticipating more growth in that area as well.
Okay. Thank you. And this is, again, the grandfathering period for these folks is not this December, but December of next year.
That's correct.
And we'll be sure to send them, even these folks impacted, email both times to let them know, don't grandfather now. And then again.
Can you send that to me?
Yes.
Can you make any more headway on the idea of at least contacting parents of rising ninth graders, giving them the opportunity to pre-grandfather to wherever they're going to be, and that way they could have their full four years of high school. I don't know that people will take it or not, but I think we ought to offer it.
I think there was a capacity concern with that. Being Fuquay as crowded as it is today, if all of the families exercised that option, it would be difficult for us to guarantee it, but we can certainly look at it.
Are they that crowded in the new Willow Springs setup?
Yeah, because it's going to be the same capacity that they are. They're digging a little bit, but they're going back to the same capacity. But they'll, they'll only see relief once Willow Springs actually.
Actually, they're there, that's right.
And that's a distance and a commitment to drive a ninth grader to Willow Springs. I mean, you know, someone wants to do it.
But they can.
I don't anticipate a lot of people would want to do that, but I, but there could be some families who would want to do that. And if we can accommodate it, I think that would be a useful thing to do.
I mean, I doubt it, but it'd be great for the people who are going to go back to Fuquay. Especially current graders, who are going to be eleven. And this is for 2021. I think it's supposed to say that because it'll have a lot of people there.
Yes, I mean, Ms. Krishna raised, and I think the earlier we can make these assignments, the easier it is for families to, to prepare. So I think this is good for us to be looking further down the road.
Skip ahead to slide 13. We had one that was out of order. So here we are looking at Fuquay Middle School. In draft one, this area here in the green was proposed to go from Fuquay Middle School to North Garner Middle School. And after hearing some board feedback and parent feedback and looking at the distance of travel, we are proposing that they would go in draft two to West Lake Middle School with this other area that is leaving Fuquay Middle School. So this particular area here would all be proposed in draft two to West Lake Middle School.
And there's room?
Yes, there is room. Yeah, and we will have updated due to the, the time when we had the public session, we weren't able to get the maps and the tables done, but we will have those done and loaded to the draft two presentation, and we'll make it available online for parents as well.
As always, thank you for trying to squeeze feedback in at that point.
So getting into some of the other, the minor cuts that we had talked about earlier. So this particular move, so if you look at the screen here, on the left side of the screen is the proposed area for, the proposed area for Fuquay Middle School. And on the right is the proposed area for Willow Spring High School. And the black line represents the proposed, I'm sorry, Fuquay High School, thank you. And on the right is Willow Spring High School. This black line represented the draft one proposed line. Looking at it again, so these, this particular neighborhood. Looking at it again, so these, this particular neighborhood here only has an egress to Sunset Lake Road, as does this one, and as does this particular area. So what we looked at was, we want to propose that this be the line here. So the shaded in blue area would be proposed to go to Willow Spring High School instead of remaining at Fuquay High School. This would also align with the elementary school boundary here as well. And so there is no egress for these families in this blue to go out this way. So that's why we're proposing that they go to Willow Spring High School.
So is that a new assignment or?
So this is a change in Draft 2. So from Draft 1, this area in blue was assigned, was, was assigned to remain at Fuquay High School. And we're proposing that they go to Willow Spring High School in Draft 2.
So when do they get another, do they get a hearing?
Well, this is, this is over a year away.
Yep.
A year away.
Yeah, but they will also have.
That's right.
Thank you for the very honest.
Which there will be the.
Are there any high school students?
Will also have a public hearing.
So, um, just, I'm trying to think of the feeder patterns for the area in blue. Is it Fuquay Elementary, Fuquay Middle, and Willow Spring, or Valentine?
Valentine, I think they're next to it.
Valentine's right there.
I believe it's Valentine Elementary.
I'm pretty sure it's both.
And then it's Holly Grove Middle School.
Okay. Since the other side is Herbert Akins.
Yes.
At Holly Grove, okay.
So here's another one. We are looking at, this is the town of Fuquay downtown. This is Judd Parkway, this black line that turns to orange here, okay? And so in Draft 1, the black line was the proposed line. We are looking to propose that the line just be Judd Parkway there until we get to this particular point, okay?
Spring.
So the area in blue would go from Fuquay High School to Willow Spring High School in Draft 2.
Is that residential area or is that commercial?
It's commercial.
So is that just to make?
No residence in that area.
Is that just to make Judd Park the natural boundary now that it's almost complete?
Almost.
And then again, this is Judd Parkway as well, coming from north to south. This is Fuquay High School in here, and this is Willow Spring. This particular area was assigned to Willow Spring High School in Draft 1. And we're proposing that they be assigned to, back to Fuquay High School for Draft 2, using again, Judd Parkway as the boundary. The large dark blue area, you see, I believe is a church on that corner. So it's, it's again, not housing.
There are some, there's some development down there.
Right there.
And then the last one we have, this is the Holly Springs area here to the north of Rouse Road there. And then on the southern part here, this is the proposed Fuquay base. And so this particular area, we were just using Rouse Road as the, the cut line there. This is actually a parcel that's on both sides of the street owned by the family. It's a nursery, I believe. And so this is just an area where they have, you know, additional open land. So what we're doing is using Rouse Road as that particular line.
So no students are on.
So the south side is Fuquay?
The south side would be Fuquay, yeah.
So it's just an algorithm that's putting parcels together and so you're just cleaning up?
Yeah, when you, when you run it through the system, but this happens a lot of times, you know, and parents will point it out as well as, hey, you know, why is that cut there?
It looks like just an appendix on the map and.
If they have sold it or some divide.
So we're just trying.
Correct, we'd be getting ahead of it.
So you zoom in and look at the view, you don't know what it is.
The house and the building, but they're far on the north side of the road, storage.
Okay.
A bit like in Florida.
That's right before you go up that big hill, or as you're starting to go up that hill on Rouse Road.
Uh, I'm, I'm not familiar if it's with the hill, but I do know it's on Rouse Road. It's just east of the Avon Ferry and Rex Road intersection.
Right.
Or is that, no, it's Castle and Rex Road.
Yeah.
Ms. Cash, just a second.
No, no, I wanted to go back to Draft 1 eventually.
Okay.
So that brings us to, any questions? Are there any additional items that staff did not address in Draft 2 that we'd like to see addressed in the final?
So I'm assuming that may be what you're asking me?
Thanks.
Oh, no, I think I want to do a clarification on something in, in Draft 1, which is following, right? We have that presentation in it, so I was hoping, I was kind of hoping to board members.
I mean, that's appropriate right now, right? Because we weren't going to go over the appendix.
We won't go all over Draft 2.
So, so now is the appropriate time to ask?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. No, I knew that.
Yeah, so now is the appropriate time to ask your question.
So page 50 of Draft 1 is where the Wake Forest and Wakefield High School move is.
Okay.
So I want to clarify, so again, that there is quite a few, quite a bit of growth around the Wake Forest area as we looked at our hotspots and the map and everything. Wake Forest is growing very fast. So the table on page 50 then, this is, was this the table we actually had that night? Or was this different? Page 50 is.
Of the original?
Of Draft 1.
The original Draft 1?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is, you're talking about the table that has Wake Forest and Wakefield only?
Yeah, exactly. The, the utilization was trailers, so.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I think something else was shown that night.
It was.
120%. Wakefield was going to 120% and Wake Forest was going to.
Looked like it was 94.
That's what people were pointing out, the utilization without trailers?
Uh, I don't know about that for sure. I just saw 120% and it's not on here, so.
I can go back and check.
It's on Slide 32.
Slide 32?
Yes.
I want to be clear.
Because it did make it look like Wakefield was, was getting to be very crowded that.
So one of the things that staff was considering for this, there's two things. One, when you look at the grandfathering in this particular area, we have seen and we recently went through some reassignment last, this past school year with Heritage High School. Many families, and we're talking a very high percentage of the families choose to grandfather. And so therefore, and this being grandfathering at all grades, we are anticipating some of that movement. So when you look at 2021 and Wake Forest High School is projected to be at 95% and Wakefield at 130%, just, I'm sorry, 105, 95 and 105, you got to take into account that these slides don't act on grandfathering.
You're assuming every single student accepts the new assignment?
Not every single, but a large percentage of them. And so that's where staff knows, in, in that sense, that you're going to have grandfathering that will level those two out for year one. And actually, year two, three, and four beyond, because those students will be able to remain once they grandfather. It's not for one year only. We also.
It's still tempting to delay it.
We also, in the, in the past couple of years, and that brings you to the next point where I, I feel like staff can't recommend to delay it because in the past three years, the allotments that, the projection allotments, the teacher allotments that we've projected have been short. Two of the years, we had thought it had to do with the school being an overflow school for Heritage. But this past year, Heritage had called back all of their students off of the waitlist prior to allotments coming out. And we were still, we still saw a significant bump in students in ninth grade attending school that were not with us the previous year. And I mean, not with us in Wake.
At Wake Forest.
That is correct, at Wake Forest High School. So that is another anticipation that we are seeing students leaving private and charter and coming back to Wake County High School, specifically Wake Forest. So this move is also anticipating that along with the growth in the area.
So, I'm sorry, no, no.
Well, just as a follow-up, so the, so when you say allotments were short, can you?
They grew by more students than we projected, so they had to hire late because they got their allotments late.
But have we issued it?
And it wasn't because of the Heritage overflow, because you're saying they had already called them?
We originally.
They had settled that number at that time. So this is those coming from homeschool or charter school or private school?
That is correct.
So the 130% 2021 in Wakefield means that's without grandfathering?
That's without trailers.
Okay, the 105% is still without grandfathering?
Correct, yes.
And are these trailers that are already at Wakefield High School?
Correct.
So that there's no.
We're not bringing in trailers, no.
Okay.
So, okay, so there is, there is something that came, I did not, I did not receive any emails from this area prior to the hearing that night. And I didn't have a recap of the forum until 15 minutes prior to the hearing that night. So I did find something out that night that surprised me, and I had, would not have ever guessed this. I had no idea that the board previous had allowed North Forest Pines to choose Heritage Middle as a year-round option over Durant Middle. So it never would have entered my mind that Heritage Middle was the North Forest Pines Middle School. I would have thought Durant Middle, needing kids would have had that. So that, that surprised us that night. We had no idea there was a cohort of kids coming, because we thought it was easy. Wakefield Middle would feed Wakefield High School, but there is a cohort of kids that we allowed to go to Heritage Middle out of North Forest Pines. And that group is one I want to look at. I don't know how we're going to look at it, but it's a small cohort. And just would never, I never would have thought that North Forest Pines could pick them over Durant Middle. So that was a, I guess, a board decision at some point, that that was the feeder school?
The calendar application, you mean?
A calendar application school.
So they had a choice?
Well, they were at North Forest Pines, so how do you do that? I mean, they were based in North Forest Pines. I don't know what they do as.
Is there a cap on here?
So can we get any history in terms of?
So the school, North Forest Pines, is the base elementary. The base middle school is Wakefield, so they have mismatched calendars. And at the time when the school opened, North Forest Pines, Durant Road did not have available seats to become the application school. So that's why Heritage at that time, or Durant Road Middle, that's why Heritage at that time was assigned to the school.
And that time was, give mistakes?
When North Forest Pines opened?
Yeah.
Oh, wow. That's a long time.
I'd have to go back and look for sure, but it's definitely, it's definitely more than five to eight years.
I, I guess at some point I would have thought that had been changed, and I wasn't watching. I, I never knew that that just.
We did look at revisions in the past year for Durant Road, but those were mostly on the eastern side of 401. We looked at an area south of Burlington Mills where we had removed their calendar application school from Heritage to be Durant.
Okay, so that surprised me and I, I wasn't aware of it and I hadn't been reached out to. And I mean, so I do think we need to, I don't know how to talk about that cohort. It's a very small cohort of kids that will be leaving their middle school to go with no kids to high school. I don't know whether we handle that through transfer appeals. I don't think, it's hard to pull them out differently because I think they're all part of a.
And I think to add to what Ms. Cash is saying, I don't know if it's because families who were impacted by this move in particular had chosen options, you know, their calendar options, or had, you know, for whatever reason weren't, they, they just, this came as a little bit of a surprise to them, and I, you know, I don't know, they seemed to be surprised as well. In fact, some of them didn't even know they were impacted. I can certainly understand the, the reasons for limiting that. But I think this, this, the Wake Forest-Wakefield move was a really big surprise to a lot of families. That was the feedback I was getting that evening at the parent input session. So if it's possible to, to reach out to those families and offer, you know, the opportunity for more feedback, Ms. Cash and I discussed perhaps having, you know, have an opening, having a meeting with them. But I feel like they, they were really surprised more so than.
I was surprised, and I had been selling this plan out in my community as cleaning up Wakefield to Wakefield.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, my impression was.
And that's what I, and that's exactly why I promoted it, to do it.
We didn't know they were at all these.
I didn't realize North Forest Pine was feeding Heritage Middle.
Well, again, I think we have to be really careful here. Calendar application is not feeder, right?
No, I agree, but we had a elementary base at a year-round without a, and then the calendar option for middle. I agree with that. And, but, yeah, it is all kind of confusing to me, not confusing, I get it, I still don't know how it happened. It's more that we have a cohort of 26 kids coming out of a middle school to go into a high school that they don't know anybody that they've been with. So I don't know whether we want to, how we want to address that, because that's surprising.
I mean, 26 kids is a cohort. It's kind of hard to hear 26 kids who don't know anybody, if, if, that's maybe a different story. Ms. Mathy, you can get your hands.
I've done it before. I would not accept.
No, I just, I mean, I think, you know, we have an opportunity, maybe not this year, but possibly next year, to look at that feeder pattern because we've been working to align calendars K-8.
And we fixed the feeder, I mean, they don't go into Heritage now.
So they have, meaning the K-8, so they have a year-round elementary base and a traditional middle school base? So looking at trying to have calendar alignment is something.
North Forest and Durant, but not North Forest and Heritage. North Forest and Durant, but not North Forest.
We can certainly look at all the options in the area, but I, I think what Ms. Mathy is getting at is trying to make sure that parents don't have to choose between a calendar when moving from elementary to middle because they don't have that flow of just flowing directly into that, or feeding directly into that same calendar.
Absolutely. And is, is Heritage Middle, do they have a cap or is it just?
They do not have a cap.
I just was surprised because I'm always trying to keep larger, and that's why again, I was so opposed to putting Wakefield-Wakefield as a cleanup. I just didn't know there were 26 kids on a calendar application. So I don't know whether we talk about that at transfer time or what, but it's.
I think in the past we've done it via individual transfers.
Would parents would be, or just submit a request for transfer?
Okay, and that's fine. I just want to be, okay, and I just want us to be aware that that was something that was odd.
Because when we change calendar options, it is like a reassignment.
Calendar application.
That's calendar applications or the calendar application schools. Those have been hard. So I think we've, we've tried not to change those too much because it is, it makes, it's a reassignment. And then it didn't move and we're not opening a new school, but we're changing the calendar options. And that, perhaps that's how that happened, Ms. Cash.
We have that.
Wanted that stability of assignment as a choice.
I don't know how I missed that.
Yeah, yes.
And it does, at least they have 612 alignment.
But it's not a calendar.
I don't, I don't even, alignment doesn't bother me. It's.
It's a whole board of students. I think being aware of it is important.
I usually know all that. I just. Sometimes there's a small part. I mean, if it's 20 kids and it's calendar application, you don't always know how many kids are accessing.
That's what I just said earlier today.
Well, yes, but I study this, like.
We do too, but it takes parents to tell you.
And I talk about Wakefield, yeah.
This is also reinforcing our need to get a little bit more control on our calendar assignment. When do we have it? When don't we? When do we use it in various calendars and so on? We keep talking about developing a set of criteria. We don't have them yet. But, but we get caught with these kind of things unfortunately too regularly.
If we'd given them Durant, they would have probably gone with a cohort in Wakefield.
But like Ms. Kashner noted, that would be perceived as a reassignment. And effectively, sort of is.
I mean, we had a year-round in their calendar that had a cohort going to high school. We didn't choose that. So I would have changed that a long time ago. I'd known that. No, it wouldn't be. I just should have counted. I'm actually mad that I'm.
Pretty much.
I'm more, I'm, no, that's not 1890s?
90s, I mean.
No, that's, that's not it.
It's 2019.
It's more the fact that I didn't touch it. I should have known that we had.
I appreciate you raising it because I'm, I can.
I'm better at myself than any past board. I just usually catch that when I know they're going different directions.
Does anyone have any additional questions for Mr. Croson?
No, I know you didn't. He did.
I have one, but I, like I said, I can just.
Thank you.
All right. So we will hear, I'm sure, some more feedback tonight during public comment. We have our public hearing on the 19th. Just as a reminder, we do not have a work session on the 19th because many of us will be up at the North Carolina School Boys Association Conference. We will come back for the board meeting, at which time we will have a public hearing. And the plan is for wherever we are to have resolved so we can vote on the. and the plan is for wherever we are to have resolved, so we can vote on the first meeting in December.
If no work session, then that's?
No work session in two weeks on the 9th, 19th, the 20th, 19th? Yeah, because we'll be at the North Carolina School Boys Association. Okay.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion for us to go into closed session with the specific objective of handling the one student assignment item?
entertain such a motion?
Yeah, aye. And I would. Second. Move that we go into closed session to consider confidential personnel information protected under GS 143, 318 dot 11A1, A3, and A6, and 115C dash 319. Insult of the Board of Education Attorney to preserve attorney-client privileges provided in GS 143 dash 318 dot 11A3. Insult of the Board of Education Attorney and preserve attorney-client privileges provided in GS 143, 318 dot 11A3, due to current litigation. JH buy-through his, buy-through his parents, AH and TH versus Wake County Public School System, Board of Education. 19EDC dash 0507O, from the Office of Administrative Hearings, and AM, buy-through his parent, AM versus WCPSS, 19EDC 04303, in the Office of Administrative Hearings, to consider confidential student information protected under GS 115C dash 402, and the Family Educational and Privacy Rights Act 20USC 1232.
Second.
We have motion, second, going, going to closed session. All those in favor, please sign if you want to say aye.
Aye.
You both say aye.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher, for making our attorney happy. It's good to be with an attorney happy.
That doesn't mean he gets to go.